Hey, what's up everyone? Steve Famiano with the Voice of Apple Valley Podcast. Great to be here today. I am so glad to be back in a podcast forum. I love being here in front of the microphone. And I love this opportunity with the podcast that we don't really get on the social media accounts where we can really sit down here and have conversation. And we're going to have a great conversation today. We're talking town council elections 2026. And you're probably thinking, wait a minute, 2026, that's a whole year away. Well, my guest that I have on today is the one that pretty much kicked off this 2026 town council campaign, Mr. Ted Bohannon. Ted's going to be joining me in just a minute. And we're going to talk a lot of things with Ted, get to know Ted a little bit and find out what Ted is all about and why he decided to run for town council. But before we get into that, I want to let you know what I'm looking forward to as far as the voice of Apple Valley when it comes to the town council elections. I, I really think this is a great opportunity for me to help you, the public and the residents of Apple Valley, get more informed about the election and not only the election, the candidates specifically and what these candidates are all about, even the incumbent candidates who are going to be running for reelection, as is Kerry Leon for District Three against Ted Bohannon. And there's a lot of things that we don't have the opportunity to discuss with these candidates. And I really want to use the voice of Apple Valley over this campaign to do podcasts with the candidates, commentary and really dive in deep to find out who the best people are to lead Apple Valley into the future. And I really look forward to this opportunity. On a side note, because I know this is going to come up, I am not endorsing anyone in the 2026 town council election. I am not going to put my name behind anybody. What I think is important is for you, the public of Apple Valley, to put your name behind somebody. I'm going to be the conduit to help you come to the best vote you can in November of 2026. So when you have your ballot and you're filling out your little black dot, I want you to have as much information as possible to make the most informed vote as possible. And I don't want to influence the selection whatsoever. Now, some are going to say, wow, man, Steve, you've been pretty critical of the town council over the past year. And I have, I've been very critical on certain decisions that the town council has made. But on the flip side, I've been very supportive of other decisions that they have made, like keeping the animal shelter, which I think the town of Apple Valley should have its own animal shelter. They did the right thing by voting to keep that, in my opinion. I'm a huge youth sports guy. I fought the state of California to save youth football for six years. I love recreation and kids being in sports and part of that is parks. I support the town of Apple Valley building 500 parks if they can. That that's a positive for the town of Apple Valley. So I can give both sides here. And that's what I want to do through the voice of Apple Valley. I think it's okay to critique, and I think it's okay to give a compliment too. So just because I've been critical of the town council doesn't mean that I can't do a neutral interview with Kerry Leon, which I haven't extended an invitation to her to come on the Voice of Apple Valley Podcast. She said she would come on with me after the holidays were over. We don't have a specific date, but I'm really looking forward to hooking up with Councilmember Kerry Leon to get her perspective on things. So you know, we got to hear her side too, right? So I'm really looking forward to this 2026 town council election, as I hope you are. And it's a very important election because there are three council seats up for reelection this, this 2026 election. You have the mayor's position, you have the one that we're going to discuss today, District Three, and then you have Kurt Emick in District Four. His seat is up. So we've got three of the five up for election in 2026. So it's, it's going to be a fun one. It's going to be a really fun one. And I think today's podcast is going to be fun too, because we're going to get to know a guy that probably most of us don't really know. And that is Ted Bohannon, who is going to join me now here on the Voice of Apple Valley Podcast. Ted, how you doing today?
Steve, I'm doing excellent. Nice little cold breezy day, but not too bad.
Well, you know,
loved your intro, dude. It's like rock and roll.
Well, no, I, well, I definitely wanted to get that out there because I think it's important that people know Ted that I'm here to help the public and help you and the candidates get your message out, right? I think that's very critical. And that's why I'm excited to have you on today. Now, in full disclosure, I don't know Ted as, as a friend, I guess you could say. I, I know you from social media. That's how we got to know each other. We've each other on our social media groups. I've seen you at town council meetings and we've had some discussion there, but otherwise I have no idea where you live. I don't, I don't really know much about you personally. So I think that's a great place for us to start. So that the residents of Apple Valley can start to get to know who you are, and then we'll get into why you decided to run for council. So why don't you give us some personal information? Tell us a little bit about, you know, your background, who you are and, and you know, family life and you don't, you don't have to go in too much depth with your family, you know, drag families into the election, but let everybody know a little bit about yourself.
Well, honestly, I'm just a regular guy. It's like, there's nothing like super special about me. I mean, I'm just a family man. I have five kids, been married to my wife going on almost 23 years.
Congrats.
I mean, I've worked at regular jobs. I mean, I worked down at the casino for 10 years. I was the manager of the arcade for all those people who knew about the arcade in the mall for a while. I was, I was the manager there. I was the manager of John's Incredible Pizza when it was up and going. But I mean, honestly, I just, I'm just a regular guy, just kind of like trying to go day to day, making sure ends meet and and just making sure our families taken care of. And I've kind of really kind of like started to get to where it's kind of like, I'm really kind of concerned of what's going in my, in my town. That's why I started digging into what's going on in our town.
Yeah, that's a good segue to get into why you're really wanting to run for town council District Three. So what, what was that trigger point for you? What was the, what was the, the event or maybe something you saw online or, you know, one day you just went, man, you know what? I, I think I should jump in and see if I can make a difference here. What, what was it that got you to jump into this town council race?
Well, I think basically it was like, I think one of the main issues was not being informed, not the transparency of what the council is giving and what's being informed. Instead of just the goody goodies saying that they're having a Christmas tree lighting, there is a car show happening, which is great and wonderful. And I think the people should be a part of the town and participate in these issues. But when it comes down to when I started going to the town meetings and starting to go into the districts and seeing like the road conditions and then going over to concentrate on District Three, since that's what the districts I, I'm in. And just going in there and seeing all the issues in, in just one park alone, James Woody Park. I remember going into the park, trying to get, um, see what was going on in there. And I, I saw the murals over there against the gym with the big red Xs on the Martin Luther King mural. And my son tell, cause my son, my oldest son was telling me, Dad, can you do something about this mural? It's like, yeah, that's, that, that, that's, that's downright horrible to sit there and demigrate a mural to Martin Luther King. And I, and I got involved and getting, and got the attention to it and got it fixed. But other things that I, I've been talking about a water fountain over there since early spring, I started to understand this needs to get fixed. And they're, they're giving me this runaround of why it's not fixed or what they're waiting for. I ran into Kerry Leon.
Let's expand on this. This is interesting because I was going to ask you about this a little bit later on, but you, since you brought it up, let's, let's expand on this topic here. Now, a lot of people that maybe are watching the Voice of Apple Valley Podcast, maybe they haven't seen the videos that you did and you posted online. So you were at James Woody Park and you were recording some of the deficiencies that were going on at James Woody Park. And one of them was this drinking fountain that's basically been down for quite some time. So expand on how you went from the video of videoing this broken fountain to where we are now and what the status of it is.
Okay, for me, I ran into Kerry Leon at a yard sale. She was selling this, these people's house and they were having a yard sale because they were moving. And she, I told her about this water fountain and it's not been fixed.
When you told her about the water fountain at this garage sale, this is an interesting story. So you ran into Kerry Leon at a garage sale and you told her about the fountain there. What was her response to you about this broken fountain when you guys were at this garage sale?
This is the thing that took, that kind of like set me over the, to push me over the point of saying like that this woman does, is oblivious to what's going on in her district. She told me she did not know. It's kind of like, and she's told me at the very beginning that how she's like going in her district to find out what, and when she sits there and tells me she doesn't know, and then later on, and I just found out about three weeks, three to four weeks ago, that this wa, this specific water fountain's been like this for two years. That tells me you're not in your district. You're not walking, you're, you're not, you're going, you might be going to James Woody Park for the, when they have the opening season, opening day for baseball season. But you're oblivious to what's going on in the park. What's the issues of the park?
Well, you know, this is interesting and I'm not trying to throw the maintenance crews under the, uh, under the bus either, but there's maintenance crews that go to that park constantly every week to do maintenance. So I, I mean, I'm not trying to release Kerry Leon of not being responsible for her district, but there's a lot of people in, in the town of Apple Valley that have eyes on our park. So it's incredible that we would have a drinking fountain. That's just been, you know, in disrepair for two years. But now that you had told her about it, what, what, what was her response? Was, did she tell you?
She told me she would, she would look into it. And to this day, she has not answered me and this, and this has been going on for so long. And what's really kind of funny is that this last council meeting, they were talking about the bathroom situation at James Woody House. It was, it was like better than prison bathrooms were better than this. And I've talked to the people in that park saying like, yeah, this is an issue. And she like was quick with a response and I was there the next day and they were cleaning it up, which is give, give kudos to Public Works for that. But it's kind of like, why haven't you addressed this to me or take me to the side saying like, hey, well, this is what's going on.
So let me ask you this. This is a great, this is a great first question for a potential town council candidate. So let's reverse this drinking fountain story. So let's say you're the town council person. Kerry Leon is just the citizen. She sees you at a garage sale. She comes up to you and says, hey, Councilmember Bohannon, I've been noticing the drinking fountain at James Woody Park has not been fixed in six, seven months, however long it is. What would you do differently than what Kerry Leon did in handling this drinking fountain?
First, basically, take my happy little feet and walked up, went over to what, to James Woody Park to say, what, what is this the issue? And there's other issues there that we can discuss later if you want, but say like, is this an issue? Is this a problem? Yes. Now let's go, let's go next day to park and rec and say like, what's the issue? What's going on with this? Give me answers. And then once I would sit there and do is kind of like for me, because you know, I do the videos and stuff like that. I would want to video. So my whole thing is to keep the town informed to say, hey, look, Jane, I had someone come up to be, show the issue. So, so there's trans, full transparency of what's going on. And say like, this is being addressed. This is what parking wrecks are, are telling me. And to let them know, it's kind of like, I'm going to keep following up on this until this is done.
Yeah, that, that seems like a, uh, I don't know, a responsible thing to do as a council person, right? If, if a resident brings you an issue, whether it's a drinking fountain or the crack in your road in front of your house. I mean, you would hope that the people you elect would have some interest in following up with you. At least, look, if you, if they can't fix the fountain, if the town is not able to fix the fountain, just tell us, right? Just tell you, hey Ted, that the fountain's not getting fixed and it is what it is. At least you would have some type.
Honestly, you could, I mean, at least tell the people the truth. Well, you know what? It's not going to get fixed. The well at Horseman Park. And you know, the story of the well at Horseman Park.
Yeah.
People have been trying to get this fixed. Just sit there and say like, hey, look, we're not going to fix it. This is kind of like, it's just I mean, at least be honest about it and be truthful. At least we, okay, then what more can we say? Okay, that we got an answer. That's the answer. Okay, let's move on.
So expanding on this a little bit more because you brought up the Horseman's Well. If you do get elected to town council next year, is that something? And I'm kind of getting a vibe from you that this is what you're looking to do. And you can tell me I'm wrong or right or expand on it. Are you saying that you're going to be more interactive with the residents of Apple Valley? That's what it seems like you're saying, right? Like you would actually go out and.
That's the biggest thing is kind of like, is that this is a two-way street. The people need to get more involved with what's going on in the council. They need to get more involved with the events that go on because honestly, you see the council members out in this, but most of the time they're kind of like trying to blend in and stuff like that. But it's kind of like, that's part of the thing is I wanted the people to stay informed. I want people to come and talk to, come up to me in Walmart or Target to say like, hey, how are you doing that? And honestly, this is what I'm going to, this is what I'm going to do right now, since this is brought up. Everybody needs to get their phone, phones, piece of paper and a pen. My phone number is four, four, two, four, three, one, four, oh, and scratch that, what is four, four, two, four, three, eight, one, four, nine, seven. That gets your YouTube me. You can, and once I'm elected, that phone number will still be good. And you want to meet me? You want to talk to me? Anything else even from, from after I, I promised my wife after thing, that number, that, that number will be answered after the, after, after the holidays going forward. And I'll let you know with, if, if what, if I'm like at Christmas time, the holidays, then my phone, but my phone will be on from 10:00 AM to 2:00 PM. So anybody who wants to call me and get it straight from the horse's mouth, I will answer you. And if you want to, I will make arrangements to come in personally meet you. So you can actually meet me face to face, look me eye to eye.
Well, that's a, that's pretty bold on your part to give out your phone number because you're probably going to get some interesting calls, but that's.
Oh, I'm sure.
Yeah, that's a great gesture, right? But no, but that's, that's openness to the public that I don't think anybody's ever seen before here in Apple Valley, right? I mean, I don't, I've never seen it. I don't know anybody on the council that's given their personal phone number out for the public to call them. I mean, that maybe they should.
I want to bring the council to the people. Because not everybody can sit there and make every Tuesday at certain times or anything like that. People have lives. I mean, I'm semi, I'm pretty much some, I call it semi-retired because I have handicap, I have handicapped sons and most, a lot of people do know that because I mean, I have my one son who's, who, um, who's beaten cancer three times and has epilepsy and stuff. And I, that's why I stopped working to take care of him and my son who has autism. But it's kind of like, that's why I do the sports officiating. Sorry. I do high school, baseball, volleyball, soccer. I do the youth football officiating. It's something that I, I really love doing. I give back to, to the kids who, I mean, there's a shortage of officials. And it makes a little money on the side. So it's kind of like it, it works out and then I enjoy doing it.
Well, doing that though, gives you a pretty good vibe. So you, you're definitely around town. You do, uh, reffing for Apple Granite and, uh, you know, use some of the youth sports in town. So you're around town here. So you, you get a good vibe from people too, right? You're, you're out and can, and get a vibe from the public too, while you're out, you know, figuring out, you know, what their concerns are and what their issues are. But I think it's really incredible that you, you gave out your phone number, you know? I mean, that's, uh, and I think that, that might be part of this process, right? Of, of, of the council is, is trying some new and different things, right? Like, you know, we, we get comfortable in life sometimes and you know, it's good to have competition and be challenged on certain things. And, and some people might say, oh, you guys are talking about a drinking fountain. It's like, well, it's not, it's not just the drinking fountain that's the issue. It's the, the lack of interest in actually getting the damn thing fixed, right? It's, it's, it's not just.
The whole thing, you can't, you can't just hold, hold to, you can only sit there and say, you've got the council sitting, saying, we've got this big, huge growth. But the holy thing is when you look at District Three, it has stayed the same. Nothing's changed. It's stayed same. Like I've always said, my wife is super happy that there's a hobby lobby that's that close to, close to Apple Valley and my pocket, and my, and my pocket is already crying.
Well, watch out there. There'll be a hobby lobby on the highway 18. So I don't know where your house is at, but watch out. Before you know it, we're going to have one on the target side. So it'll be a closer drive to spend your money faster, but that, that's a whole nother.
Don't give them any, don't give my wife any ideas.
That's a whole nother discussion. But while you're talking about District Three, that, there's a few questions I want to hit you on. And, and today, of course, we're not going to be able to dive into everything because it's, you know, try and keep this under an hour, uh, this podcast under an hour. So we'll definitely down the road get into more, you know, depth when we talk about, you know, the issues of Apple Valley. But one of the things, and the drinking fountain was actually one of the things I was going to ask you, but you brought it up. So we covered that one. The next thing I want to ask you about, and I think you did a few videos on the chip seal project that was happening on the desert Knoll side of Apple Valley. This picture that I'm bringing up here is just a random picture of Highway 18. This is the outer highway. Um, you can tell in the picture, there's some patching that had been done, but there's a lot of cracks and stuff. And I think, and I believe that everybody watching this podcast, and if you took a poll of everybody that lives in Apple Valley, I think the number one issue in town, period, is the condition of our roads. So can you give us some perspective on what your opinion is on how the roads are being handled? And maybe give us a little in-depth thought on the chip seal project? Cause I think you did a couple of videos on that a while ago.
Yeah, I've, I've done a few, quite a few videos on that one. And basically all it is, is just putting lipstick on a pig. If you're not fixing the road as you go or anything like that, the alligator cracking, anything like that, all you're doing is putting a almost just painting it black. You're not really fit doing anything. And honestly, and what they're going to, they're planning on doing is spending another close to $4 million to chip seal another 30 miles of road. And honestly, that's their solution. Pretty much that is the council, council solution is just putting this chip seal down. And honestly, let's, let's just put a little common sense here. There's plenty of solutions that what could you do? And this is, I'm just going to throw out a few different-ish solutions and, and wrap it up. It's like, is you can either go with what they're doing, having the chip sealed down. You can put a bond measure out there and let the voters vote for it. Or you can put so much of measure I money with Prop P money. And which, um, we'll talk about Prop P in a second, but you can have all these different issues or solutions to the roads. What you need to do is get them together, tell the people of Apple Valley, the pros and cons of each one. And let the town of Apple Valley of out, that, Apple Valley decide what they want to do going forward. I mean, this is their town. Are they willing, are they willing to settle for chip seal? Are they wanting to put so much money into, to the roads? Do they want to put extra money into that? That's just nothing but to actually fix the roads. And let the people decide on what they're willing to do. And as the council should just, okay, this is what the people want to do. And this is what they're, they'll accept. Let's do it.
So do you think Measure P is brand new and we really don't have a, a good judge of how much funding is coming in from Measure P? Last time I heard the town manager say at a council meeting, it might've been about two, maybe $3 million have come in to this point in Measure P. So.
Well, last time I heard him at the last town meeting, he didn't know.
Well, the last, no, the very, very last one, he made a comment about it being two to $3 million so far coming in. But I don't know what the total is going to be, but would you, would you utilize Measure P funds to help offset the minimal amount of funds we have now with Measure I and SB1 funds that come from the state? Would you add Measure P funds into the road repair fund and start using some of those Measure P funds to help offset the amount of money that's missing to fix these roads?
Well, what I would do with Prop P money is I would want to put a portion of Prop P money, 50% of, of that money to, to end and add it to the Measure I money to actually fix the roads, not just fill a pothole or put, or put the chip seal down, but actually fix the road.
So you're talking about going in, no chip seal, no slurry coat, none of that. You're talking about actually going in, grinding this stuff down, either grinding it down. And putting new asphalt. I mean, are you, are you saying that you support using?
That's what I would support. Because honestly, because it's, because I mean, the under, the underbed of, of the roads, I mean, you get the weather like what we've been having is going underneath those roads and all you're going to get is more potholes, more cracking, more everything. So it's kind of like, let's go down every, the main roads, the main side roads, then get into the residential areas to actually fix what, what needs to be fixed. Then that's my part. And then with the other part of it is I would definitely stop any new projects, what projects that they're already approved to go forward and, and do them. But I wouldn't add any new projects to sit there, go through the council and everything until everything is done, like the legacy trail. That's been setting for so long, it's not even funny. You got the, the well project that, that sits there and just keeps getting more and more expenses to fix. Fix what we have before we do something else.
No, I mean, that seems fair, right? I mean, there are a lot of things that the town of Apple Valley has let sit for years and years and years unfinished, unfinished or unfixed. So I don't think that's too much to ask to say, hey, let's, let's focus on getting some of this stuff behind us cleaned up. So we can focus moving forward and having a clean slate of town items to fix, right? I mean, I, that, that sounds, uh, that sounds reasonable. I know the road.
What I also do, Steve, not to interrupt you, but, um, have put like 10% of that Prop P money every year as a rainy day fund. If something major happens in the town, just add that 10% into it and put it to the side, let it draw interest, whatever. And just have it as a rainy day fund where we can't say like, well, where are we getting the money from? How are we going to budget this emergency that we have? You've got to plan for the rainy day.
Yeah. I mean, that makes sense. I mean, you got to save money, right? You got to, you got to have that emergency fund because you never know what's going to hit. I mean, we went through COVID and that really messed up a lot of governments from the local level all the way up to the federal level. So I mean, to have, uh, and have that rainy day fund is not a bad idea. Now I'm going to move on to, um, Kerry Leon, and I'm going to bring up a quote, and I want to get your perspective on this. So this is from a Daily Press article back when Kerry Leon was first running for town council. And what the quote says is, it says, "In a previous interview with the Daily Press, Leon said she saw herself as the logical successor to Barb Stanton, and that she also has her own voice in quotes, and is capable of respectful disagreements at times while remaining okay with solutions at the end of the day." So basically Kerry Leon, when she ran for town council back in 2018, said that she was her own person. She had her own voice. She doesn't have a problem disagreeing with, you know, the members, the other members on the council if she was going to be elected. One thing that I've noticed in following the council really closely over the past year, and then looking back to previous years, I'm just wondering if that statement is accurate. Have you seen Kerry Leon follow what the council's doing and basically vote in lockstep? Or have you seen Kerry Leon kind of step back and, and question certain things with the town?
I, I mean, as, as long as I've been following this, I have never seen her disagree or question anything. But basically just to go along. And the whole thing is, is kind of like, it's, it's fine to sit there and work with the council, which I'm saying I will work with the council, but I'm not going to go along just to get along. I'm, if, if, if something, if something sinks to high heaven, that's going to sound like, you need to, you need to really explain this a little bit more because honestly, I'm not just going to sit there and. Because honestly, I'm not just going to sit there and go along with, um, what the, what, um, the other four are going to sit there and say, because they might have their own agenda. Cause I mean, we don't, because the council members aren't supposed to talk to each other and anything else when they're going to a vote or anything. But I have no problem sitting there saying like, especially when it comes like the town budget, it's like, cause she sat there and says she's going to balance the budget and she's going to be fish, um, fiscally conservative, which is kind of like, I'm still waiting for that one. Cause everything I go back from the past budget and the, the money that they're spending. I mean, you're talking about millions for the Singh Center where the mayor sat there, said that he didn't even know if it's going to break even. These people are business people. If you're not, you're supposed to do something to make, to make money and you don't even, why do something? If you're not even going to break even, this is the people's of Apple Valley's money that you're playing with, and it's not monopoly money.
Yeah. And that's true. And, and, and a lot of the things, and, and since you're not into the political world yet, see what happens is, is a lot of people, when they get elected and they get on these councils, or they get into the assembly, that, you know, they get up into Congress, everything becomes a one-liner, right? I care about you. I'll support you. I'll do this. And, and, and some of those lines that are being said are the same thing here in Apple Valley. But the reason I asked you about that quote from Kerry Leone was because I think it's important for the voters of Apple Valley to know if there's going to be somebody on that council that will not be afraid to challenge the status quo in Apple Valley.
Well, I tell you the truth, I, I tell you the truth, Steve, they won't like me. They're not going to like, because I mean, they're going to have to answer questions that it's kind of like, not just a, some generic little, oh, what's, what's this color of the sky today? It's like, no, you're going to have to answer some hard questions because it's kind of like, I'm not, I'm not going to sit there and just, okay, whatever you want to do. No. Because honestly, it's their town. It's their money. And honestly, let's just call it like, like me with an umpire. I'll call a ball, a ball, the strike, a strike. I, I have, cause honestly, that's cause honestly, I deal, I deal with, with parents and coaches that yell at me and scream at me and all that type of stuff. And it just flows off my back. And it's like, you, you want to push my buttons. Like I said, say, I'll say like, I'll throw a flag on you. I'll, I'll eject you from the game. I have no problem with that.
Well, you, you said something that's interesting, but I'm going to challenge you on this. You said, you said they're not going to like me. I'm just wondering if that's what you want. Do, do, do you want, I would think you would want the other council members to like you and like your ideas, wouldn't you? Or do you want to just be this guy that's a disruptor on the Apple Valley town council?
No, I don't want to be a disruptor. But the thing is they like the status quo. They like the free flow. They don't like, they don't like the question. Cause I mean, honestly, the, when I talk to the people in the town, the town is oblivious to what's going on there. But it's like, I know I will shake their tree. I'm not, I'm not going to be one that's going to sit there and just be like, like cute. That's like, oh, I'm a council member now. No, I'm going in there to, to, it's business. And it's kind of like, they, they like the status quo. That's why I said, just say they're not going to like me. And they're going to have to answer. And that's the one to, to the things that, that they do. I mean, look at how many times you, you go into the, the, that's one of the things that I think the people of Apple Valley have this disconnect from, they have this big, huge disconnect from the council. They go in there, they, they have three minutes to say something. And most of the time they're saying, okay, thank you. Um, who's the next person up here? And it's kind of like, there was no inter like, I mean, honestly, they don't even go up and shake your hand or say like, oh, thank you for, or this, this personal touch. It's like, even though we might didn't disagree or anything else, but at least half this part to where at least there's that welcoming. There's that thing. It's like, you know what? You came. Thank you.
Yeah, I can see that.
Let's find some answer.
I can see that. And, and, and that's a good approach. Now I'm going to move on to, uh, something else here. And I'm going to bring up a video that you did, I believe it's in the past week or so. It's just a small clip from the video.
Your endorsement. I want your, I need to earn yours because honestly, you are the one that matters. Not them, you. And for a long time she's neglected you.
So what I want to ask you is, I thought your video was very, very interesting for a lot of different reasons. I've somewhat hit on this a little bit. And it, it's in regards to political endorsements. So in the beginning of your video, you were talking about how Kerry Leone has Jay Orbelti, the congressman endorsing her and, and some other high-profile, out-of-area politicians, you know, endorsing her to be on the town council. What you said was, was very interesting and I, I've never really heard it said that way from a politician before, especially on a local level.
Call me a politician. That's like bad taste in my mouth.
No, no, I'm just, well, once you get elected, you're going to be a politician. So get ready.
Oh, yeah.
But no, what I'm saying is anybody running for office or even, even a politician that's an elected politician. You said, I don't need those endorsements. All I need is your endorsement. Meaning you were talking to the residents of Apple Valley, saying all you really care about is what they think. And, and their endorsement matters to you. Can you expand on that video that you posted and that comment that you made about that?
Well, honestly, it's kind of like, it's like you said, every politician's got to run for the, thinking that they're going to have this big, huge person behind them to get like, you got like Jay Alboner, the highly Republican and stuff like that. And it's kind of like, they're trying to get certain voters to say like, oh, this person's going to be, and honestly, it's, it's, I've never been one big for wanting to get a, someone that's not even in this area, especially in a local election. It's like, what does Jay Orbelti come and have? Come visit and hear this, the attorney from San Bernardino come up here and digging into everything, the, the everyday lives of Apple Valley people? No. They, they do their, their, their stuff in San Bernardino. Jay Albarnelli does his stuff in Washington DC. And it comes down to is like, what is going to affect the lives of the people of Apple Valley? I'm a citizen. All I look at this is I'm a citizen of Apple Valley. And it, it comes down to what those, that connection with the people. Because I just want me to go to the people and say like, hey, this is what I'm about. This is what I am. What do you think of what's going on in this town? And it's like, if you want to support me and I'm there, there's been, there's, there's people out there telling me, keep going what I'm doing. That means more to me than having some, some politician, congressman or whatever to say like, okay, I'm endorsing you. Okay. But the people of Apple Valley care the most.
Yeah, that's a fair, uh, that, no, that's a fair way to look at it, you know? And like I said, I've never, and I follow politics for a long time, even outside of Apple Valley. I, I was involved with Sacramento for six years trying to save youth football. So I, I've experienced politics on a level that most people would never, ever imagine. Um, and it's, it's, it's an interesting little club. And I'll call it a club. Um, and, and I'm not attacking anybody by saying that, but it's an interesting dynamic to have politicians endorsing other politicians, right? I mean, that's just an interesting di- what, what is.
Little boy club. They want, they want their same people in like always because they, because it's easy, it's easy. And then, and dealing with people's lives and stuff like, it's difficult because honestly, the choices you make and you decide to do, if you don't have the people's input, you, it's just your opinion and not the people, uh, the, the, you have the people's Apple Valley's opinion, which their opinion means most because honestly, that's who you're voting for.
Yeah, that, that is true. Well, I, I appreciate you coming on today. I think we covered quite a bit. And we're definitely going to have more interviews with you. I'm going to have more interviews with other candidates that I hear are jumping into the race, maybe for district three, possibly for mayor and district four, which is good. I'm going to say it to you while you're here with me. I believe Apple Valley is stronger by having more candidates running than less. Nobody in this town should be an incumbent running unopposed. That is not good for our town. And that, and I will say that to Kerry Leone. I will say that to Mayor Scott Nassif right to their face. It is not good for our town to have the mayor, running for mayor, unopposed without a candidate, at least one candidate against him. So I appreciate you jumping in the race. I know you've probably twisted this campaign up a little bit that, uh, they, they didn't expect coming out this early with it, but I think it's good because it's going to give us an opportunity to get to know you and get to know the other candidates and the incumbents. And all the incumbents on that town council are welcome to come on this show with me. I will invite every single one of them on here. Now I didn't really go too deep on you today, but at some point, as, as I interview you more, I'm going to challenge you on some things because I think our candidates should be challenged and, and they, they should have to answer tough questions. I just really, I just wanted to take today to give you an opportunity to kind of break in with people and, um, get to know you a little bit more. So I think it was a very good conversation and I really thank you for coming on today, Ted. I really appreciate it.
Oh, no, one more, just one real, real quick thing is that, that number, I'm going to give that phone, phone number out one more time. Four, four, two, four, three, eight, one, four, nine, seven. And if you, if the phone, if you, if you get the message, I will make sure to call you the next day.
All right. We, we appreciate that, Ted. This is Mr. Ted Mohannon, new town council candidate for district three town council election in 2026. Once again, Ted, thanks for coming on with the voice of Apple Valley. I really appreciate it.
I appreciate it, Steve. Take care.
Take care. All right. What a great conversation. I really enjoy this, you know, it's, it's how we learn from each other. And especially when it comes to our town council candidates, we got to have these discussions. You know, the way it used to work when you ran for office and it still works this way in Victorville and Asperia and all the other high desert cities. You'd basically come out, announce your campaign, you create a Facebook little campaign page. You throw out all your endorsements on there and then you might give a quote to one of the local papers. And that's how you ran for office. Oh, and then you went around putting up the campaign signs on fences all over town. Well, those days are over. That's why I love this opportunity to be able to highlight these candidates and talk to them. So we get to know who these people are. It is imperative that we know as much about our local candidates as we can, when we take that ballot out and we mark that circle. Not just looking at a sign on a fence that says, I'm running for mayor, vote for me. It should not, people should not be elected that way. And I will be fair to everybody that comes on the voice of Apple Valley podcast with me. And we're going to have a lot of interviews, I hope, over the next year, as we lead into the 2026 town council election. Appreciate you joining today. Make sure to follow us on all of our social media accounts, Facebook, Instagram and Tik Tok. And we'll definitely see you around town. Steve Famiano with the voice of Apple Valley.